All right, I'm going to bring this regular city council meeting of the City of International Falls to order. It is 5:30 on March 15th, 2021. Come on in. We were just waiting for you. No, we haven't even started. Come on in.
Oh, you can stand. Doesn't hurt.
Our first item on the agenda is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please join. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody.
Get you a walker.
Please note that all members of the council are present. Our first, our agenda today does have one addition. We have the Human Resources Committee recommendation to approve the labor agreement and memorandum of understanding on pay for members, planning and negotiating contracts between the City of International Falls and the IAMAW District Lodge Number Five, Woodworkers Local 33, and the Union for the Police Department, January 1st, 2021 through the end of this year, December 31st, 2021. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that addition.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech.
Is there a deletion on that, too?
Yes, actually, there is. There was a deletion of Section, Chapter 10, Section 52, for the Code of Ordinances. If the council doesn't mind, we'll just leave that in there and then we'll just deal with that as part of the business when we get there. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have the minutes from March 1st, 2021. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have the payments of claims, transfers and payments of claims. City of International Falls transfers going to the 401 Permanent Improvement is $66,666.66. That's being split evenly from the 601 Water and the 603 Sewer in the amount each of $33,333.33. Going to the 403, capital reserve for capital outlay, $25,760.42. And that's coming out of the 601 Water, $19,136.17. And Fund 603, the sewer, in the amount of $6,624.25. For total transfers for the city of $92,427.8. Next, we have International Falls' regular claims of $447,535.60. Airport Commission claims of $11,669.47. And International Falls' Public Library Board claims of $4,599.81 for a total accounts payable of $463,804.88. The chair would entertain a motion to accept, to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Caught for a second, we weren't going to pay bills. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Anybody in the audience or anyone online that would like to bring anything to the attention of the city council? There will also be an opportunity at the end of the meeting for the same thing. We have no public hearings, no opening bids, no old business. So that brings us to the consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda, Ofor Suite Catering Iditarit Restaurant License. Chair would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech.
Second.
We have a, Councilor Deech made the motion, and Councilor Bowler, seconds. Call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, just some information for residents of International Falls. The County Assessor's Open Book Meeting is Wednesday, May 19th, 2021, from 9:00 a.m. till noon at the assessor's office. That's at the courthouse, 715 Fourth Street, for informal appeal, for taxpayers to discuss their property assessment and valuation. If anybody has any issues with the price of their property, this is where you would go. This is when you would go to have that discussion with the tax assessor, not, and that's on the valuation of your building, not when you find out how much your taxes are at the end of the year. So if you have any questions, Len is very good about being able to work with people. So please attend that on May 19th from 9:00 a.m. till noon at the assessor's office. Betty, do you have anything to add to that?
Nope, that covers it. Thank you.
All right. Please.
I think it's important to note at the end of this, it says, too, if you have any questions and you can't be at that meeting, to give them a call and find out to make sure.
Yep.
So you don't have to be at that meeting, just make sure you call in and let them know.
Sounds good. Appreciate that. Thank you. Next, I would like to reappoint Ted Brokaw, the Director of Public Works, to the Northeast Area, I'm sorry, Minnesota Area Transportation Partnership, and Mike Wallace, the Public Works Supervisor, as an alternate for him. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that reappointment.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Kraus. Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have a resolution approving an exempt permit for Falls Memorial Hospital doing business as Falls Memorial, or, I'm sorry, Rainy Lake Medical Center Foundation to conduct a raffle at 1400 Highway 71 on August 20th, 2021. Chair would entertain a motion for that resolution.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion?
If I may, Mayor?
Please.
That, they, we had just done this last council as well, but because of the date and the time change, they couldn't have it September 1st. It was too far past the original date. So they had to back it up a couple days. That's why it's here in front of you again, this council meeting.
Okay. All right, Chair would, any other discussion? Chair will call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, consider applying for USDA facilities grant in partnership with Koochin County. Deputy Administrator, Acting City Administrator, can you give us a little background on this?
I'm going to defer to our Director of Public Works on this one if he, if.
Took the glasses off. He's getting serious.
Yeah, he is getting serious.
He's getting serious. Glasses are off.
Make sure the microphone is on. It is.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Before Mr. Anderson left, he had asked me to, if I would sit in on a meeting with the county and KETA, to discuss the possibility of the city partnering with the county to apply for a USDA grant to look at community facility needs, if there's any opportunity for the county and the city to look at long-term needs and see if there's some ways that we can come together if there's a need for a new facility. The grant is for up to $150,000. What I'm asking is if we would, the county, they were going to bring in front of the county that we would match up to 10%, so it would cost us, if we were awarded the $150,000, it'd cost us up to $7,500. But with the LEC and the Sheriff's Department, you know, there may be some public works and the county maintenance, that type of stuff, some of the stuff we're doing at Cary Park. The one thing it does not cover is upgrading to existing facilities. So it would be for a new facility. I don't think it really hurts to apply for it. I think it's a good opportunity to look at, and I don't think it's, you know, we're out of a lot of money if, you know, and your chances of being awarded money help if you do some cost matching. So.
Does anyone have any questions for the Director of Public Works?
Mayor, one other thing?
Yes.
The, the county will be applying for the grant. They will handle, KETA's going to do the application, but all the fiscal responsibility and the tracking and that type of stuff would all be through the county. So.
Okay. Any questions for Ted? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion for, to apply for the USDA facilities grant in partnership with Koochin County.
Moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Second by Councilor Bowler. Discussion? What would the timeline be on this? Like, how long would it be until we would know if we were granted, or?
Well, I think the application's due this week. I think the county was going to, I think it was last Tuesday. So actually, we were working with Paul today, too. He's working on the application right now. So it's close, anyway.
So how long until we would know if we were awarded any funds?
I'm not sure.
Okay. All right, I will call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a recommendation from the Human Resources Committee. This is to approve a one-year labor agreement and memorandum of understanding. I will hand this off to our HR chair.
Well, basically, as I say, I just stepped into this position. It sounds like everything's been approved, that it's ran through all the chambers. It's, Ken's looked at it, Betty's looked at it, and it sounds like it's a goal.
Okay. Betty, do you have anything to add?
Just that the business agent, Joe Schwartz, had presented this in front of the Police Department on late Friday. That's why it's to you at such a late, you know, kind of a later notice. There were two memorandum of understandings attached to this agreement. However, they did not agree with one of them and denied the one. And it was a participation in the Minnesota State Retirement System for their sick leave at the time of retirement. It's purely an employee option, and they chose not to do that. And so just kind of on record that, you know, they have denied and did not want to move forward with that memorandum of understanding, but they signed the, the one that's noted in here and agreed with and approved the tentative agreement and changes that they had spoke about in their negotiations.
So there's no, no concern for the city council on that memorandum of understanding? That's through the business agent, the employees?
Everything from my understanding has been satisfied.
All right, well, fantastic. And again, I want to thank, obviously, Joe Schwartz, the business agent, and Ken, and past Councilor Briggs for the negotiations and bringing everything forward and getting us to where we're at today. With that being said, I would, I would request a motion to approve the one-year labor agreement and the memorandum of understanding.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech.
A second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, Committee of the Whole recommendations. First one we have here is to approve a revised 2021 contract for services between the City of International Falls and the International Falls Area Chamber of Commerce, effective immediately. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that agree, actually, it would be backdated till January 1st, 2021. I apologize. Okay, we have a motion from Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Any discussion? I just want to say thank you specifically to Tricia. We did spend a handful of days together talking about this, and it was more about ideas, more so than what the previous contract has been. And I really think that, I know I'm satisfied, and I hope the council is, too. And I do think that this is going to bridge that gap between the city council and the chamber. There's, this is less money than what we have done in the past. However, with what we're looking at getting out of this agreement, it opens up the door to different possibilities and more, more services that the Chamber of Commerce can facilitate on behalf of the city, which would benefit the city in the long run and benefit the business community. So I, I think it is a really good match. Tricia, do you have anything to add to that?
No, Mr. Mayor, I echo your thoughts and thank you as well for your time and discussion and agree with the way it puts us moving forward.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Chair would call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. And next is a secondary piece of what we had discussed and negotiated is, the, the chamber has had a, the chamber has had a lease agreement with the city for quite some time with, I think it was 5,000 a month?
500.
500 a month. 5,000 a year?
Yeah.
Okay, good. That's way different. So in some of the funds that we, we give the chamber, with having less monies going to the chamber this year through the contract, one of the ways to kind of bolster that is to lower their rent payments to, to zero. The offer has been given to the chamber to purchase the building over the next year or so. We're going to look at if that makes sense financially for them, what costs the city has going into it. And we just want to make sure that it's a good fit for both the chamber. And I think everyone on this council knows that the city is trying to get out of the rental business. So we, we don't want to hold real property and be dealing with the maintenance on other, other properties and what is specifically government-used. So anyways, this is a, a piece of what we had discussed. This is a five-year lease. However, either side can get out of it with 30 days' notice. With that being said, I don't see that being, coming to fruition. But Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the lease agreement with the City of International Falls and the International Falls Area Chamber of Commerce.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion? Please.
Did you discuss an effective date with the chamber on this agreement?
I didn't, but I would assume as well that it would be, help me with that one.
Well, we've already paid the first quarter rent, so we might as well just start April 1st instead of backdating.
Give it back.
Having money in the mode or anything like that.
I would, I would suggest April 1st.
Would we give it back?
Well, you could.
Well, it would help. I mean, we could take it, I mean, if, I mean, our, our contract went back to January 1st, so why couldn't this lease agreement go back to January 1st?
What are your thoughts on that? Is that, is that a nightmare downstairs? So the chair would be open to some clarification. Councilor Bowler, yours, your, you made the motion. What date would you like?
I said January 1st.
Okay, January 1. And Councilor Kraus, obviously, you're okay with that? I, I heard you actually say it. Now that I think about it, it just slipped my mind. So we have a effective date of that lease agreement would be January 1st, and then we could refund those payments back. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we go to the revised job description for the city administrator position. At our Committee of the Whole meeting that we had last Monday, there were two things that were struck from, excuse me, the job description that was outlined for trying to find an administrator last time, in which we hired Administrator Anderson. Under the essential functions and responsibilities, one of the things that this council has found is we are lacking in human resources. And the previous administrator took on that role as HR, and I think that we need to jump into 2021 and have an HR person designated to the city, however that looks. With that being said, we did take out, act as human resource manager, develop and update personnel policies that will further the goals of the city council and generally improve the quality of the city administration. And we also took out, as a concern that Councilor Holden had had, on other typical duties and responsibilities on page two, we struck, serve as a part of the negotiation team to negotiate the terms of employee labor contracts for presentation to the council. And again, the discussion that we had there was, it makes sense if we were to get an HR person, that that would be the person that would sit on those negotiations. With that being said, Chair would entertain a motion to accept the updated job description for the city administrator.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have, consider options for hiring a city administrator. At the, at the Committee of the Whole meeting, there was a discussion on how we wanted to fill the vacancy. At the last regular city council meeting, we had said that we wanted to start the process of recruitment. At the last, at the Committee of the Whole meeting, it became pretty clear that the recruitment process might be rather large and encompassing. And we also got additional information that the last time that we went for a search for a city administrator, we originally had hired, or had searched locally. And then after not coming up with a candidate that the city council was okay with, we ended up going to a recruitment process which lasted a little bit over a year. That recruitment process is what the council had decided on January, or, I'm sorry, March 1st this year. And it's become relatively clear that the council is looking to probably go in the same direction as what the previous city council did when they looked for Ken Anderson. I think we're looking at going either to an internal promotion or an internal recruitment process. And then if we don't find anyone that way, I think we would be looking at a recruitment process. I'm going to open up the floor for the council to have a discussion on how they would like to see the vacancy filled. And then after we have a discussion, I will call for a motion to move forward. So just open conversation at this point. Anyone have anything to add to the nature?
My thoughts are, we should go through the recruitment process right away. I know our attorney, Shimon, said that we could give a time limit. We could tell them, we want, in 60 days, we want this, and we want 10, six candidates, 10 candidates, whatever, 60 days. And give it out, give that proposal out to our people that we know all that can do this recruiting process, because they're professionals at this. And I think that we need to, I think a citizen deserves that chance to have that. Not that we don't have somebody internal that can do it. I don't think that's, that's a question of anybody's mind. But from what I'm hearing, I think that, that my constituents, anyway, want that to happen.
Okay.
So I'm just speaking for, for that. And I think by, by finding out that we can stream it down and not, not, you know, if we go out and then we decide we're going to go out again and recruit, well, there we go, there's another year again. So if we start this process with the recruitment right away, and give them a, a timeframe, and give them a candidate, how many we want, and in that timeframe, will it cost us to have that done to them and then go from there?
Okay. Councilor Kraus, your thoughts?
All the phone calls that I've received, I, I agree this with Councilor Bowler fully. Although the, the internal is very tempting, I do think that we owe it to our constituents in this city to have a search and let the best candidate emerge.
We may have the best candidate right here.
We might.
I mean, I, for now, I would say, yes, we do. But, you know, we do. Anyway, no, I think we need, that's my thoughts.
Okay. Councilor Holden?
Just can't go for a year or over a year. I mean, that's, that happened, and that's way too long. We need to get going. I saw it over on the school board. We had candidates around the town. We also had internal. And it worked out good with an internal person. And he's still the superintendent. So usually, they know what's going on, and they're good.
I'm good with both internal and recruitment. I think we've got an excellent opportunity to hire within internally. As I say, I'm good with either one. I'm just wondering, what is it going to cost for the recruitment? Anybody have an idea there, dollar-wise? I mean, we're, we're here to save money also.
Betty?
I apologize. It wasn't on the memo because Patty from Baker and Tilly, which is the company that we had actually used to hire Administrator Anderson, phoned me back late Friday afternoon. And I had talked with her, and she, I told her, you know, we had used her search before, and she had looked that up and seen all that. And she's saying that somewhere in the ballpark of about $19,000 to $20,000. She also indicated that currently right now with the searches that they're doing, it's about a four-month process. And then that's to have somebody sign an agreement. And then as, after that, it's about a 45-day period before that person is actually on staff. That is the average that they're seeing at this time. Mind you, you can ask them for something different, and they can, you know, definitely do and, you know, change the agreement as you guys choose to.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. To clarify, Betty, the recruitment was how much?
Well, last time, like, it's in the memo, it was about 16, almost 17,000. Right now, she said it's about $19,000 to $20,000.
Okay. I would be for hiring internally. We don't need to spend this kind of money when we have a potential person that'll fill this position. We have to look out for our funds also.
So, so I'm hearing two different sides, like, literally, two different sides of the room. Are we, so my, my thought is, is I wouldn't mind doing an internal recruitment process, but not an internal promotion. If we do an internal recruitment process, what does that look like, and I guess I'm putting you on the spot, Betty, but what does that look like for trying to reach out for candidates outside the area of International Falls? I mean, what, internal recruitment process, it uses the city staff to conduct a search. It increases the ability to attract a larger pool of qualified candidates than just in, in the city of, or, city staff of International Falls. I mean, what, what does that look like for doing that internal recruitment process?
That internal recruitment process is just the administration staff doing the recruitment, going out advertising wherever we, you know, the council chooses to, whether we do the metro, central Minnesota, all the northern, you know, the whole state, depending on how you want to do that advertising. That process is city administration staff doing the recruitment.
Okay. Okay. And, and just for, for the record, that's kind of where I'm at, rather than that formal recruitment process on the finances that, that Counselor Deech has pointed out. But I also want to make sure that we're not limiting ourselves as a city to just, you know, local promotion in the journal or whatever. I want to make sure that we're trying to reach out to the best of our ability to let people know that we are looking to fill this position with a qualified candidate. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, then I will accept a motion of one of the three options that we have.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make the motion option number one, internal promotion.
Okay. We have a motion for just an internal promotion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Counselor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No. So I'll accept another motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I will make option two, internal recruitment.
Okay, we have a motion for an internal recruitment process. Do we have, from Counselor Kraus, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? As a voting member of this board, I will make the second for the motion. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I don't disagree that we may have a candidate here currently working for us that would fill this position. My fear is that, I don't want this board to be accused of cronyism. I don't want anyone to come back at us and say, you just recruited somebody without looking at anybody. This is, it's, this is probably, this is the chief executive officer of the city of International Falls. This is the most important position, no offense to any of the department directors back there, but it is, it is the most important position as far as the administration is concerned in the city. So for us to, to just appoint somebody without giving anybody else an opportunity, I believe is, it would be wrong. I'm not saying that the deputy city administrator wouldn't do a bang-up job, and she might be the candidate that comes out on top. But I still feel like we need to, we need to take a look. We need to give others an opportunity to apply, at least apply for the job. That's just my opinion on the matter.
Please.
Mr. Mayor, my question is, how far out are we going to reach? You know, I mean, we get a recruiter, they're going to reach out way out. But how far out are we going to reach if we're going to do an internal search?
I would think the metro area, Fargo, you know, area, probably within a 400-mile radius. I mean, I hate to be the guy to say it, but International Falls is known for how cold it is, and it's very, very difficult to recruit professionals to this area. And we all know that, from the hospital to, I mean, the Chamber of Commerce is here, and they can verify that it is very difficult to try to reach people to come up here from outside the area. So I would say people that are familiar with our climate, people that are familiar with the area, I would think probably about a 400-mile radius of our area would make the most sense.
And are we going to have, are we going to just rely on our administration to go through all this? Are we going to have a committee to do this? Or how are we going to handle that? Are we going to rely on Betty and her staff to take this big job on, do this?
I would, I would think that this is not a task that would not be able to be done by our city administration. Is that a fair assumption?
It's a fair assumption. However, with everything that's been dropped on our plates over the last couple of weeks, it's going to be a task. I'll be honest with you.
Okay. Any other discussion? My one thing is here, we, we're looking for someone to be the city administrator. And although we have an acting city administrator right now, we don't know who's going to apply for the job. That's one of the things that I think we're, we need to really think about, is we don't know who's going to apply for the job. So we may get some great candidates, we may get some poor candidates, we may not get candidates that we expect that are going to apply. So I just want to make everyone know that if we have an internal recruitment process and it fails, then we, we're probably going to have to go to a full recruitment process. So we may be in the exact same boat as what has happened in the past, but we don't know who's going to apply until we have the position advertised.
Oh, this position's important, and it can't drag on for, like, the way the last one did.
I understand.
But we got to get on it. I mean, and for me, internally, the person, deputy administrator, has already proved herself for over 20 years. She has been an interim administrator during the time when they couldn't find an administrator for over a year. She handled the day-to-day like a professional. I've been around her for a long time. I think she's a great candidate.
Mr. Mayor, could I argue that with an internal recruitment process, if we do an internal recruitment process and a candidate does not emerge, then wouldn't that be saying that a person that we were to internally promote would not fit the bill? So it gives you an opportunity to look at more candidates, but ultimately, if whoever comes up...
You don't have to go the professional route.
Right. You don't have to necessarily go the professional route. You take a look and see what you can get. But, I mean, ultimately, I would assume that the person that you would want to appoint internally is going to apply in that candidate group. So if they're the best candidate, then they get the job. If they're not the best candidate, we have to go the other route, then they wouldn't have been the best candidate anyway. Does that make sense?
Question. But why would you waste the money before you even try internally? I can't understand that. I would try, just like any other business, you would try your employers, employees that you have in the business to see if they work. If they don't work, you go somewhere else. Why would you spend close to $20,000 to go outside and hire somebody?
Counselor Deech, that's not my motion.
We're not...
I know, I know. I'm just still talking. I mean, it doesn't make sense to me that you'd spend any kind of money like that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
You know, what else I like about having a local person be an administrator is they're putting their money into this town. And they would have a house in this town where past administrator, our last one, hardly ever saw, I mean, he wasn't around. That's my own opinion now. You know, if you got somebody local, you got somebody that's here to stay. And that's the reason I voted for the superintendent that we got now over at the school, because I knew he was going to stay. We were losing superintendents every year. They were going out the door, boom, gone. And Mr. Grover stayed, well, six, seven years now. He's very community-oriented. I like the fact. I mean, I've been around the local here, and I, I like what I've seen over the years.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
So we have a motion and a second.
And, Mr. Mayor, can I just add that by opening it up for, say, 30 days, we, it would, since it's internal, it could potentially be a local candidate that gets hired. I'm just, it's just, I just feel for best, best practice to just open it up. It's just my opinion on the matter. I could be wrong.
So we have a motion and a second to do an internal recruitment process and use city staff to conduct a search. Call the question.
Yes.
Nate? Yes?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries four for the motion and one against the motion. Next, we go to...
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Just a suggestion, that you may want to determine right now the deadline for receiving applications and things. Otherwise, it's really open-ended.
Okay.
How long your internal search process, what the deadline, set here tonight, the deadline to receive applications.
That's a good point.
That way you know your kind of timeframe.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question of an audience member? We have the president of the Chamber of Commerce in here, and I do believe that there's a statewide or maybe even further job bank somewhere, or am I way off on that, Tricia?
Um, ah, thank you. So there, well, okay, so a couple of things on this.
You have to move to the microphone now that he got you talking.
First off, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. So just in a brief, about half of my career has been spent in an HR role, specifically not in union capacities, in private business only, so the negotiations all are different. But a lot of it is as recruiter and recruiting. So I think that the process, there's just a bit of a process to establish a timeline before you put one on. The council picks one tonight for the staff to really, I mean, I kind of echo a little bit of the interim administrators' concerns about time for them. I think to be able to plot out, you know, steps would be, what is our target geographic, allowing them time to source, like, what are the recruiting resources in their area, where we're going to be submitting ads to? Is it through online directories and resources? Is it targeting local papers in those specific communities that you want to be in, creating ads, getting them posted, giving adequate time then for those posts to kind of be out there for candidates to consider to apply, right? And then all the other kind of screening steps when it comes in of, you know, evaluating, you know, having, hopefully, a form to kind of go evaluating the candidates and finding them for you. So I, there are, there are, the Minnesota Deed Office, like, our local Career Force Office, has a great work bank for that. I think as a government job, I would also look at USAjobs.gov if city jobs are applicable to be on that as well, that you'd have an opportunity to find those, you know, people interested in government jobs that are already in those types of positions within there. And then I think your League of Cities had a toolkit on some stuff for that as well. But would be available to assist, right, even just on the side, and support the deputy administrator at all with any questions through the process as that's being assembled. And if I may, just while I'm here, if the option does come back to a professional recruiter in regards to the fees that are associated with that, it also goes to, right, alleviate the time because there, you're, it's costing you still to go through the recruiting process by their time that it takes to spend and all of that as well, is, a recruiter fee is traditionally a negotiated percent of the recruitees', like, a starting salary. So depending on, like, the, either their salary and or compensation package, if it's like 20% of what they would be starting at or something, usually around that would be how you could guesstimate maybe where they would show up with you at. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I was just looking at a calendar, and if we went through April 30th, that gives one, two, three, four, five, six, seven weeks to take applications. If we went through April 30th, I think that would be sufficient.
Can you make that work, Betty? Is that enough time for you?
I mean, if that's what you choose, we'll get it done. That's what we're here to do, is we'll manage it. But other things may get pushed to the back of the burner for a little while while we do this process, and it's an important process, so absolutely.
Okay. Does that work for everyone, April 30th, to collect applications?
Friday.
All right. Do we, do we need a motion for that, or is just consent? Chair would entertain a motion to have April 30th as the last day to submit applications for the city administrator job.
I will make that, I can make that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion by Counselor Kraus to have the last day to accept applications as April 30th. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries five zero. Thank you. City Attorney, does that handle most of the questions that we have? Because I love that you brought that up. Thank you. All right. So if we could get the building official and everyone that's going to be helping us with Court of Ordinances this evening, we are going to be repealing, we have a first reading to repeal the following sections of our Code of Ordinances. Chapter four, section five, the building number identification. Chapter seven, section five, regulation of grass, weeds, trees, shrubs, brush, and other rank or harmful vegetation. Chapter 10, section one, storage, deposit, and disposal of refuge. Chapter 10, section 50, abandoning a motorized vehicle. Section 10, I'm sorry, chapter 10, section 51, prevention, reduction, and elimination of blighting factors, only section A, cause of blight or blighting factors. Chapter 10, section 60, grass and weeds on the private property. And section 10, I'm sorry, chapter 10, section 63, open stairways. And the purpose for these changes to the Code of Ordinances is because it is our intention to adopt the International Property Maintenance Code, and all of these are addressed inside that. I'll hand it off to you, gentlemen, if you guys want to just have a discussion on what we're looking at this evening.
Mayor, council, the first thing I'd like to say is that in reviewing this, I apologize, I should have noticed it sooner, I wasn't around today, but when it says chapter four, section five, that is one section within the property, within our housing code currently. We should be repealing the whole section of 420, which is our housing code, and it's being replaced by the International Property Maintenance Code. So somehow, we ended up with just one section of it in here.
So it's chapter four...
Chapter four, section 20, or four dash 20, excuse me, second. It covers the whole housing code, which we are using currently, and that is the whole reason for the change, is to go to the International Property Maintenance Code, which is used in other areas also. We would be adopting the 2021 version of the International Property Maintenance Code. There's many previous sections that were adopted in other communities at the time. We are going to the 2021.
All right. So I just have to make sure that I'm clear on this. We're, the recommendation was to get rid of chapter 420, not 45.
45 gets removed also because it's a part of the 420.
Okay. Okay. I just want to clarify that. All right, any other...
The other thing that was asked about when you do the adoption of this code, of the International Property Maintenance Code, there's an insertion page, which is the paper Jared handed out to you earlier today. And basically, they're asking, within this code book, to cover those sections with stipulated heights or sizes, like, the first one is the grass. Basically, what it is, is it's the same insertions we have in our current housing code, it just goes into this Code of Ordinances correctly. We haven't changed anything, it's the same numbers that are within there. The dates of when you have to heat your house, when you have to do an occupied space, those are all within what we have already. These are just dates that we inserted into here. Anything else you have on that?
No, it's, it is, just for clarity, we want to, we do want to repeal chapter four, section five, but we want to also repeal section four...
Dash 20.
Dash 20, and replace with the International Property Maintenance Code.
Okay.
Five is not part of 20, it's two separate sections.
Okay.
Just for clarity.
All right. So the request is, and I just want to make sure that we have this correct, we are going to, we are going to repeal section, chapter four, five, seven, five, 10, one, 10, 50, 10, 51, section A, 10, 60, 10, 63, and we are going to repeal and replace 420.
Correct.
So the chair would entertain a motion for the first reading... So the chair would entertain a motion for the first reading to repeal those following sections of the Code of Ordinances.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Okay. Any discussion?
Please. I think one of the other additions that they had said is we have to put down the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code.
Oh, I, okay, I was just repealing. I apologize.
It's all one motion here, I think, is what I see anyway, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and Counselor Holden, you're fine with that?
Yep.
To repeal and replace with that?
Yep.
Okay? And Counselor Kraus? Excellent. All right. Any other discussion? Okay, so since this is the first reading of it, at the next, okay, real quick though, since this is the first reading of this, at the next meeting, can we have it a little bit like more cleaned up so that we can see in the ordinances, red strike line, so we see what's coming out, what's going back in, just so we, we have a clearer understanding of where we're at? And Fire Marshal, you had something to add?
And I just wanted to let you know that there is a section B to 10, 51 that is enforcement action, so we just have to make sure that that stays there.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, approve temporary structure permit application and fees.
The temporary structure application that you have in your packet, basically one that we've talked about for quite some time. We do already have a fee schedule in place, it was adopted when we did our fee structure for the building codes that we do have. I apologize, I didn't grab that sheet by accident, but I believe it's 6750, if I'm not mistaken. There's a state surcharge and a plan, plan fee. And basically what it is, is if somebody wants to put up a temporary structure for a short period of time, they do have to meet the requirements of the zoning setbacks. What we run into right now is a lot of people put these things right on the property lines and/or too close to other buildings. They need to be able to go where people want to put them. You can't just plop them up and call them good. They have to, they have to meet the requirements of our codes that we already have in place. So what it is, is the application you're approving, just basically, they will be filling it out, telling us they want to have the thing for a six-month period, what it'll be, and they'll be able to put them up in the, in the fall time, but they're going to have to come down in the spring. Or if they want to choose different months, we don't really set it, but it has to be, it's only going to be used for a period of time. If you needed an extension, you'd have to come back to us to ask for an extension, like, say, I'm working on my house, I've been storing all my contents in there, it's not quite done yet. We do have the ability to do so with that also, so.
Okay. So chair would entertain a motion to approve the temporary structure permit and applications and fees.
So...
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deach. Discussion? What do we do about the ones that are already up?
I think we're just going to have to walk through that and see what we can do with them. The ones that are placed on areas that they shouldn't be, we'll probably have to address, give them a six-month period, I would assume. You know, they've already started it, I think we'd have to extend it out, in all fairness, but I think we have to pick a date, similar to like Mr. Schmon had said earlier about your recruitment. I think we should be able to say, by this date, we should know where these are at and go forward in there. I don't know, Steve, you have any thoughts on that?
Well, that would, you just have to be reasonable and apply due process. And some of it, I think, would be covered by existing ordinances, and in a lot of this, I think we would interpret as being in violation of existing ordinances. The new one just sets out a more defined process as how to deal with it, and it's a temporary in nature type of thing, and get some specifics. So it's more, I view it as really more of a detailed way to enforce what we've already got to a large extent. So I don't know that they're necessarily under this new one, would be things that are currently okay, things that aren't okay now, aren't going to be okay under the new one.
No.
So I, I, but I, I think you're right, we would give them a longer period of time to rectify. It wouldn't be like with our blight, we would give them seven days, you know, I mean, I think we want to give them a number of months, you know, and maybe we would set, you know, by the end of the summer, whatever you feel on the enforcement end is reasonable, but, and I think that discretion could really just be with your department.
I think some of them are pretty simple, Mayor, because some of them, the tarps are blowing off them already. I would say one that's not in compliance right now, where the tarps blown away, they, they need to come down in a short period of time. Now, if one is sitting there pretty sound, we could probably talk to the owner and say, hey, this is the, the ruling. Are you going to want to have this thing this winter? We probably don't want to start your six-month now, you probably want to reconsider when you want to put it up.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you might want to do it at a later date. If you want to cover your vote for the winter, I mean, and you have the space, I would assume you'd want to come in November, not start at the beginning of May and have to take it down.
The reason I ask is I just don't want us to get into another parking ticket conundrum. Number one, I think what we did with parking tickets was fantastic for the community. With that being said, I don't want overnight us to have, you know, a temporary structure, you know, manhunt in the community. And I, I just, I want to make sure that people are well aware that this is what we're looking at doing. We're not the first community, we're not even the first community in northern Minnesota. As I understand it, Little Fork just adopted this as well.
Adopted one last, last year, actually.
So I just, I just want to make sure that the residents are aware that this is something that we're looking at and have due process to be able to rectify the situation before there's fines or, or whatever, so.
Mayor?
Please.
For clarity, could we go through what type of structures are going to fall under this ordinance?
I think you could, Counselor Deach, but I think that it kind of falls under temporary structure. If it does not meet the building codes, it is, it is temporary structure. So meaning, if it's built to the standards of the building code, pretty much is there. If...
So you're talking storage trailers?
Basically, you're talking, the ones that you'd be talking would be carports, the type that you put up for temporary use, like a tented one with a canvas top. The one that's really contentious with us all the time is actually one that Minnesota State Building Codes has been addressing for, what, two years now, which is a real tough one, is these containers that are used for boxcar containers.
Right.
Boxcar containers cannot be used for a structure unless they have a registered engineer write up the plans and tell them how they're going to, how they're going to mount them and if they'll hold up the support to the, the load. It can't be just me coming in saying, this is, thing's made of steel, it works. It doesn't work that way. It's very similar to a mobile home, where they have to be anchored to the ground and they have to meet those requirements to be set up that way. So to be honest with you, most of these containers that are out there, most of them don't have the crap labeling on them yet, and most people aren't going to spend the extensive money it takes to get to that next level. So like, when you see the tiny houses in the bigger cities where they're renovating these things, it's possible, but they know, tell you on the, on the, this flash that they had to go through these things, they had to put down sonnet tubes or whatever it is to make a permanent foundation, and somebody signed off on it to say it's going to work.
You answered the question.
Hopefully.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve temporary structure permit application and fees. Chair would call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next, we have the, approve the dissolving of the Building and Property Blight Advisory Committee and send letters of appreciation to the committee members. I'll hand this to Counselor Deach.
Okay. We discussed this at the community, committee of the whole, and basically, we decided there was no real need to continue with our blight committee. We've got a Fire Marshal that's handling this, and we do not want to interfere in what he's doing with public input through our committee and basically trying to direct him. And this, this ad hoc committee that was, was created two, three years ago, was supposed to be a temporary position, temporary committee, and it's time to let that committee go and let Jared Baldwin do his job.
Okay, so the chair would entertain a motion to dissolve that committee and send letters of appreciation to the committee members.
So move.
We have a motion by Counselor Deach.
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Discussion? I just, I, I want to say thank you to the committee members. Specifically, they have put in a lot of time and hard work, especially with the, in the very beginning, when this was first formed, it was formed by Counselor Jacksaw. And with that being said, we had some great people on there that brought together to do the community cleanups, and they have went fantastic. But I, I do echo Counselor Deach's thoughts on, we do have someone that is actively day-to-day doing this position, and what has happened in the past is people want to help, so how do you help? You call the person that does the job and give them a workload. And I, I don't think that that's what that position was meant for, but I do truly, from the bottom of my heart, do thank all of those people in our community that have been part of that committee to get us where we're at today. So thank you, and I definitely will be more than willing and able to sign those letters of appreciation. With that being said, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have a Public Works Committee recommendation to approve a no parking sign on Fourth Avenue from Fourth Street to 11th Street during the Highway 53 construction or detour. Please.
It was recommended that we do this because of the narrow road and the amount of traffic that's going to be traveling down that road during that construction time, and we've had trouble and issues last year on some other roads already. And just by being proactive, start this out as being no parking on both sides, we're going to probably get a little kickback from some here and there, but I just think that's a good, a good idea, a good way to go. And once the construction in that area is over, they'll come down.
Fantastic. So the chair would...
Go back to calendar parking.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve that temporary no parking signs.
I say move.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Any other business to come before the city council? Hearing none, we'll go to reports of the administrator, attorney, department heads. City administrator?
I have nothing additional this evening, Mayor.
Okay. City attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Another busy day tomorrow in court. We have, I have 43 criminal cases that are going to be heard that are city, all city cases. Several of them are blight, and we're moving forward. Been working closely with Kelly and Jared. We've got kind of a standing, we get together every Friday morning for hour, two, or however it takes to go through the existing problem areas. We've got several buildings that are problem buildings, where we're working with potential buyers and neighbors to come up with situations where a person interested in acquiring the property would pay for the demolition and take care of it, and then turn it into a piece of property that would be an asset to the community rather than a detriment. Also have continuing negotiations going on with the stock tire building purchase. We've been negotiating, there was a few changes they've requested in the proposal that we submitted, and that's still in the process, but everything looks good towards getting that concluded, hopefully in the near future.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Department heads? All right, monthly blight report, it was available in your packet, you've had an opportunity to see that. Same with the police, police monthly report and the fire rescue EMS monthly report, reports of the mayor. I did sit in on the meeting on Thursday or Friday with our potential partnership organizations for ambulance taxing district. It was a very good first, first draft. Questions were asked. We ended up getting some questions addressed specifically to the city on reasons on why we are looking at the taxing district. As I understand it, the administration is going to be handling those concerns, and we will be meeting again in the near future with them regarding the taxing district. So we are moving forward with that. I, I don't have anything else. Is there any council committees, boards or commissions that would like to bring anything forward today? Well, now the blight, blight group's done.
Yeah, the blight group's done. That's a good thing.
All right. So then I open it up to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring anything to the attention of the council? Hearing none, just to let you guys know, we do have, our next regular city council meeting is going to be Monday, April 5th, 2021, at 5:30. Immediately following this meeting, we do have a special EDA meeting to discuss stopgap lending for the city for local business. So with that being said, this meeting is adjourned, and in about four minutes, we'll start our next meeting.